Hey David, hi Jim.
Hi Alan.
Hi David, hi Jim.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello, hello.
Hi Don.
Hi.
Well, if we've got everybody here, it's seven o'clock.
Recording in progress.
Good evening, everyone, and I would like to bring the meeting of October 4th, 2021, the San Carlos Planning Commission to order. And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Now, I pledge allegiance. Great, a roll call, please.
Commissioner Garvey.
Present.
Commissioner Yakaponi.
Here.
Commissioner Bradley.
Here.
Vice Chair Clements.
Present.
And Chair Ruth.
Present. The next item on our agenda is public comment. Public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act, Government Code, Section 54954.2. However, the commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention, or have a matter placed on a future commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. Is there anyone in the waiting room who would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? If there is, you can use the raise hand icon, or you can press star nine on your phone. Sarah, is there anyone in the waiting room?
Yes, we have one caller.
Great. Public comment is limited to two minutes. Please, please give us your name.
Hi, my name's Heather. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hi. So, my name's Heather, and I spoke to the city council last week, and I'm bringing the same matter to your attention regarding the 817 Walnut Project. And I want to bring your attention to the fact that the project is not being constructed for the approved plans that were presented to the San Carlos residents, which were approved by the city council and by your planning commission. The Studio E architect plans that were dated March 13th, 2019, shows explicitly a brick veneer over concrete masonry on a lower portion of the building. And that includes a wall between the 817 property and the adjacent multifamily building. These plans were approved by and appear in your San Carlos ordinance 1549. And I plan to send photos of the existing construction state. But I also welcome you in the neighborhood to just walk past the building. And you'll find that if you go from Laurel Street along Olive to Walnut, you will see what looks like concrete masonry units or cinder blocks. And you'll be surprised to learn that, you know, in a discussion with the contractor, they intend to leave the lower portion, which is approximately 15 feet high, maybe, that instead of with a brick veneer that's supposed to be facing that cinder block, they're going to leave it as cinder block. And it's going to be not only in that area, but it's also going to be on the back wall and also on the wall that faces the BNC's parking lot. And my understanding is that the findings that the city reviewed, were supposed to have things that say use of high-quality exterior materials. And leaving the walls with plain concrete or cinder block is clearly not a high-quality exterior building material. The plans that were submitted and approved called for a brick veneer. And you'll see in the photos later that the brick veneer over concrete masonry appear in all the renderings that were provided and which you approved. So, many of you were on this, on the planning committee that reviewed these plans. And we know that it's something that, you know, you want to move forward with and we're supportive of. But we want the plans, and we ask that with you folks, you know, who are, you know, and your current colleagues and everybody else involved right now, we ask that this brick veneer and not putting it on is not in keeping with the spirit of the neighborhood. It'll detract from the neighborhood character and it's inconsistent with the adjacent multifamily building. Okay. We ask that you make sure that what was approved by the planning commission is actually built as presented. And we appreciate your help in making that happen.
Thank you for your comment. And unless some other commissioner has an immediate response, I think this request should fall in the category of referring this item to the staff for attention. So if the staff could take note of this and and follow up on it, that would seem to be appropriate here.
Question, what was the address again?
It was 817 Walnut.
817 Walnut, thank you.
Good night.
And how do you know the contractor is not going to put brick there? To tell you?
Yes, the contractor, when we actually asked the contractor for the materials, because we recently painted the building next door, and our painter wanted to coordinate the colors of our wall that is between the two properties. And we were surprised to learn that there is no color, because it's going to stay cinder block. And we were shocked. It was not in, the renderings that were presented and approved by everybody shows a brick veneer on all of the lower portion of the walls. It never was presented, that I'm aware of, to the neighbors, to you, to anybody, that it was going to be without a brick veneer. And it's the majority of the low, you know, all the walls around the building on the lower portion of the, except for one little piece on the front, and, you know, a little piece on the side, everything else, everything, if you walk the building, everything that you see that is cinder block from about 15 feet below, according to the contractor, is going to stay like that. And that's not at all what this town wants to show as an exemplary example of, you know, an affordable housing, you know, great place to live, great place to be. That's not what you folks approved. What you approved was something completely different. It is a bait and switch to the community. If this is what you present, and then you build something else, that's just, it's unacceptable, absolutely unacceptable to not have what you folks presented and approved not be followed through by the contractor.
Okay. I think, I think the best course of action is for the staff to follow up to to confirm what was in the plan and what's actually going to happen through the proper channels.
Yeah, and just so you know, I did leave messages for Lisa Sanders. I did not receive a return phone call. I followed up with the city. I did not receive a return phone call. And I'm reaching out to you folks to put additional pressure to make sure that what you approved is actually built. It's imperative that the quality and materials and the standards that you folks approve, that you require for people to get approvals, that people follow through with that.
I agree. We agree. And I think we'll have the staff follow up on this. In this, there's nothing more we can do in this meeting without gathering facts.
No, I appreciate it. And I'll follow up with sending you the photos in case you don't have time to walk around. But I appreciate you calling to action, you know, getting this resolved. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you. Sarah, are there any other people in the waiting room for the, for the public comment?
Not at this time.
Great. Let's move on to the next agenda item, which is approval of minutes. And so this would be approval of first of the minutes of the Special Planning Commission, the combined meeting with the Transportation and Circulation Meeting of August 25th, 2021. Should we hold separate separate roll calls for the two meetings? Is that?
I would recommend that, Chair Ruth.
Okay. So first for the meeting of August 25th, are there, does anyone have changes to the minutes?
None from me.
So.
Yes, Chair Ruth, I do.
Okay, please.
Thanks. I wanted to request staff correct the spelling of my name on page one, first name. And I wanted to elaborate the way, and page two, the question and answer section, where the Transportation and Circulation Commissioner Baker asked about the jobs-housing balance. And I just wanted to have that statement clarified. And then Al responded that they are very close to a balance between jobs and housing. And just to clarify the geography that was being referred to. Was it just the east side? Was it the entire city? I just wanted to make sure it was clear. Thank you. No other changes.
Okay. I think the staff has taken note of that. And if I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes once those changes have been implemented, if we can do that, if we can go that way.
Chair, I would so move that the minutes of the Special Planning Commission and Transportation and Circulation Meeting of August 25th, let the minutes be approved with the recommended changes.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Thanks. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Garvey.
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponi.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements.
Yes.
And Chair Ruth.
Yes.
And next, we have approval of the minutes, the Planning Commission meeting held on September 7th, 2021. Does anyone have changes to these minutes?
None from me.
None from me.
Okay. In that case, I would entertain a motion to approve these minutes.
I move the approval of the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of September 7th, 2021.
Second, the motion.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Garvey.
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponi.
Yes.
Bradley. Vice Chair Clements.
Yes.
And Chair Ruth.
Yes. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the public hearing. And the procedure for public hearing, staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with the staff's recommendations. The applicant will make a presentation. I'm not sure this is relevant for tonight. Thereafter, interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, the public notice, or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speaker should state their name prior to addressing the commission. This was the staff in preparing the minutes. The public hearing item tonight is the East Side Innovation District Vision Plan, for the purpose of hearing and considering all comments of all persons interested in or concerned with the approval of the East Side Innovation District Plan. Does staff have a presentation?
Yes, we do. Good evening, Chair Ruth and fellow planning commissioners, Lisa Porras, Planning Manager for the City of San Carlos. Tonight, I am joined by Al Seve, our Community Development Director, and Lisa Costa-Sanders, who's been a strategic advisor for this project, as well as several members of our consultant team, Annie Ryan, Gidi Sawal, and Alex Mercury. We are very pleased to be able to deliver the East Side Innovation District Vision Plan for your review and your recommendation tonight. In your pocket includes the vision plan document itself and the accompanying appendices. Much of what's included in the vision plan, and which serves as the foundation of the vision plan, are the 10 big moves or planning strategies that have taken shape since we presented some concepts, original concepts at community workshops, and received feedback from the public at those workshops. And then more recently, at some of the study sessions that we've had with the Planning Commission, the Transportation and Circulation Commission, and then very recently with the city council. So the vision plan document as presented in the pocket is now in the form of a more complete document. All of those 10 big moves, majority of those remain the same. We will discuss some changes this evening. But in addition to the 10 big moves, it's now more of a complete document. It includes an executive summary, an introduction to the vision plan, a section on how to use the document, a description of the process, including the community engagement, the district's geographical context, and existing business character. Project goals and the overall vision statement proceed at each of the 10 big moves, which are then followed by the Community Benefits Framework. The appendices includes an existing conditions analysis, existing infrastructure analysis, a market scan, and innovation district case studies that we looked on early on at the beginning of this project, and a draft community benefits research paper, as well as district drainage and recycled water opportunities memo. And then finally, some case studies on transportation management. So this is what is before the commission this evening. So for tonight, we propose that we'll focus the presentation on the following things. So one, we want to have a touch point on the process and the next steps. We want to describe what we've heard since the study session with the planning commission on August 25th. And then walk through each of the changes that have been made since then. And thereafter, mostly, we want to allow the commission sufficient time to ask staff and the consultant team any remaining or clarifying questions. We want to hear from the public and then bring it back to discussion amongst commissioners, and then your recommendation of the vision plan. So to start, we want to start with the vision plan timeline. And the timeline for this vision plan, as mentioned previously, was nine months. We started in January this year with direct outreach to stakeholder groups. And just as a reminder, the stakeholders included property owners, business owners, developers, and members of the Greater East San Carlos Neighborhood Leadership Group. That's the neighborhood just to the north of the district area. And subsequently, we reached out to the community at large using an extensive array of outreach methods. In addition, there were many touch points with the two-member city council economic development subcommittee. All throughout this process, the key planning strategies were conceived, vetted, and refined to a point where we now have a draft vision document to present for final approval. Should the planning commission recommend approval of this draft vision plan, the city council will be scheduled, would be scheduled to consider the vision plan on Monday, October 25th. So since the commission last reviewed the draft vision plan strategies on August 25th with the Transportation and Circulation Commission, several changes were made in response to feedback that we received. And this was in addition to feedback that we received from the Greater East San Carlos Neighborhood Group, as well as from city council at their study session. So number one was a desire to take action to address the need for housing and look at the potential to study areas on the east side. That was something that we heard on the August 25th study session hearing. We also heard that there should be greater attention paid to environmental remediation, and to seek opportunities where the vision plan can broaden its look at traffic citywide. We also heard that we should not overlook strategies to reduce impact to adjacent residential neighborhood. That's another thing that we heard from the GESC as well, the Greater East San Carlos Neighborhood Group. And then finally, that we should bring more clarity to the desired look and feel of new development as it's situated alongside the public street drainage. So now, I would just like to go through these changes one by one and share with the planning commission how these have been addressed and refined in the context of the 10 big moves. So the first change that was made, was made to planning strategy number one, which was, is to establish industrial road as a Green Boulevard. And the change was made to address building placement along industrial road to ensure that a consistent pedestrian-oriented street experience would be obtained. And this is reflected in a new principle, which is shown here on the screen as Principal Letter C. So basically, Principal Letter C says to establish a generous and consistent sidewalk along the eastern side of industrial road. And then the two points underneath that principle direct how that would be done, which is that buildings must be placed 26 feet from the edge of curb to the building base to provide sidewalk, bicycle facilities, landscaping, and buffers as dimensioned in this plan under Table 1. And Table 1 is found on pages 56 and 57. The second component of this principle allows buildings to be placed a bit further back from the edge of curb, but this is, would only be considered when the building is located in an area where there's an activity hub. And by means of pushing the building back would engage with an activity hub, or that would be their response to providing that necessary placemaking component as part of their project design. So this is the one of the first changes that was made to the plan, to the strategy. The next one, so this is one that we really spent quite a bit of time really refining and finessing. And this had to do with really promoting environmental stewardship in the area and much stronger language, language addressing remediation for hazardous sites, and including flood mitigation, looking at flood mitigation as well. So the commission might recall Planning Strategy Number 3, it was originally identified as addressing Puldes Creek, you know, to really make Puldes Creek, you know, an open space and trail. And that is still contained in the overall principles within, within this particular strategy. You'll notice it here on the screen still identified as number C. But what we did is we really broadened the goal to include that, that, a nod towards promoting environmental stewardship. So the name itself changed, and the goal was adjusted to include just that, which now reads, "Establish environmental resilience best practices for the district to address flooding and environmental remediation, and increase the ecological value of the area with new connections to nature for the greater community to enjoy." And the new principle listed underneath that is Principal A, which is prioritize remediation efforts throughout the district. And so staff worked together and alongside the city attorney to come up with the language that is presented before you this evening. So that now reads, "Require that new development proposals are reviewed for legally required remediation by authorities with jurisdictional authority over groundwater and surface water contamination, including but not limited to San Mateo County Environmental Health, State Water Quality Control Board, and the Army Corps of Engineers for Waters of the United States are involved, and collaborate with authorities to ensure all relevant remediation requirements are met." So this is our attempt at really refining this and bringing forward much stronger language as requested by the commission, the Greater East San Carlos Neighborhood, as well as the city council, as well. And then, in addition to that, below that, we have a principle to prioritize flood mitigation as part of all new development in the district. And this reads, "As directed by the San Carlos Climate Mitigation and Adaptation Plan, collaborate with the flood and sea level rise resiliency district, nearby cities, city-county association of governments, San Francisco Bay Conservation and Development Commission, utilities, effective agencies, east side property owners, and other entities, to create a public-private partnership to develop, to develop, fund, and implement a regionally coordinated sea level adaptation plan." That would be very helpful to be consistent with what is called for in the climate mitigation and adaptation plan that was recently adopted by the city council. So the next area that, that we changed as a result of input from the PC and TNC was to incorporate residential into the district. So what we did, excuse me for one second. What we did was include residential in the goal itself. So in parentheses, when we refer to the mix of uses or uses in the district, we included residential as shown here in the goal. In addition to that, because this area looks at two distinct district subareas, in the first district subarea, which is the catalyst, we included new language that reads, "Study the potential for introducing mixed-use residential development along Old County Road." And then we did the same in subsection, excuse me, in the, in the district subarea B, under item number four, which here it reads pretty much the same way, except that it focuses along terminal way. And you can see in the diagram, the hatch area for how that, you know, might play out. And so these are two points in the document where we wanted to address residential per the direction that we received. The other two areas that we incorporated in this particular planning strategy had to do with providing additional guidance on the design character of future buildings and open space in the area. So you'll see this listed in the document as New Principal Letter C, and then also Letter D. So C deals with new buildings, whereas D deals with the open spaces. And I think I'm going to go ahead and skip reading them. You can always come back to them. But essentially, what this is aiming to do is to manage a continuous urban design feel along the street drainage, and really allow interruptions in that flow of the building only where there's an activity hub, or maybe it's the terminus of a discovery path. But this is one way to address the quality and build, and shape of the buildings as they interact with the public realm. The next area that we changed was in response to providing some guidance for developing slow streets and manage traffic impacts on the adjacent residential neighborhood. We heard a lot about this from the Greater East. So what we did is we provided some refinement to Principal D. And this is found on page 67 of the vision plan. But I think you might be able to read it on the screen, but I think I'll read this one, might be a little bit smaller, so I'll read it out loud. But here it reads, the principle reads, "To prioritize reduction of both freight and cut-through traffic in residential neighborhoods to the north." And there are several action items called out. One is to explore implementation of local access for slow streets management programs. The other is to develop a slow streets implementation toolkit that can identify a range of strategies for managing traffic patterns and speeds. And some of these strategies could include, of course, they're not limited to, but just to give some idea, you know, whether that signage, you know, whether that sign to signage planners and landscaping curb designs, including bulb outs, paint and other surface treatments, street furniture and other soft skate elements. And then for each toolkit element, um summarize the purpose, cost and potential trade offs, including potential parking impacts that we're just noting in here. This is something that needs to be looked at alongside of this, as well as uh conducting detailed safety and traffic analyses to identify collision hotspots and impacts to traffic across neighborhood and district street network, should these come into play. So this provides um some more guidance on this particular aspect requested change. And then uh for um planning strategy number nine, and I believe um this is the last one, this ha- addresses additional explanation for what are transportation uh demand management strategies are. So we do have that now provided um in the appendices. Um you will find that in the appendices as well. Excuse me, I guess that was, I meant to say Transportation Management Agency. So we have um, let me start over. What the document includes is case studies um on successful transportation management agencies. So that is what is included in the appendices. So that can, you know, further inform this document as it continues um to live and breathe and provide direction throughout the course of new development happening um in this area of the city. So that's some great new information that we included as part of the appendices. But then uh what we did is provide um a nod towards the city's existing transportation demand management ordinance and really looking at how that can continue to be refined um as um, you know, new information or future regional requirements um evolve and unfold and are updated in the area. So this is a new section that really addresses what we have and then really looking at um, you know, the options to expand our transportation demand management ordinance to reflect um those evolving um conditions. So this concludes um the changes that were made um and how they're presented um in the vision plan document. Um and should the commission uh wish to make a motion following um their questions hearing from the public and following their deliberations, this would be the motion, should you choose to make it. And both myself, Alice Bay, Lisa Costa Sanders, and our consulting team are available for any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, Lisa. It, that was a very nice concise uh review of what the changes are since um, since we last reviewed the document in the planning commission meeting. And um I, I'm very pleased to see the uh the the document um uh mature and become a really really valuable um and um and reflect the input from the planning commission, city council and community members. So uh I'd like to open for uh planning commissioner, uh planning commissioners clarifying questions. And um do, does anyone have um clarifying questions before we open for public comment? Well, while you're thinking, I'll start with one. And um so the um environmental stewardship, I think uh we've heard loud and clear and um all agree with the importance of that and really happy to see that was some built um that was built out a little bit more. But uh could you, it's staff, could you clarify whether the, the, how the confirmation or approval by the authorities, jurisdictional authority, how that would um be brought into the process? Is that so would, would it be a prerequisite for the final sign off by the planning commission that there'd be documentation that those requirements have been met? So sort of a process question. How would um, how would um we as a planning commission be comfortable that the appropriate review has been conducted?
I would like to uh call on my uh uh coworker, Lisa Costa Sanders. I know she's worked on projects with this um type of issue within, within the entitlement process. I, I'd like to defer to her to describe that.
Thank you. Um good evening, Lisa Costa Sanders, Principal Planner. So there are a number of the properties within the east side that do have some level of contamination. Typically groundwater contamination. And sometimes it's creeping over from adjacent properties. So um it's not always the developer or the property owner that's considered the responsible party for the cleanup. It may be an adjacent property owner or adjacent business owner. So what we've done in the past is work very closely with the responsible agency, as Lisa listed that off. It could be San Mateo County um Environmental Health or Regional Water Quality Control Board. Um and we work very closely with them to understand what their requirements are and ensure that they're met throughout the process and the appropriate documents are followed through with. Um so we would do that um moving forward to make sure, you know, that that level of contamination is addressed to the satisfaction of those agencies having the, the authority.
Thank you. That helps. And I see that Commissioner Yakaponi has your hand raised. Um you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Ruth. Did really just a uh a check in on our own process here this evening. Typically, after presentation and um opportunity for clarifying questions and public, then we come back for further discussion. Will we, will we have a follow up opportunity for conversation both amongst ourselves and staff?
I would clarify, yeah, through the chair, yes, absolutely.
Hey, thanks. Then I'll, I'll save for later.
Right. Yeah, I think it's useful to um to save them, save that and save, save the discussion kind of questions and opinions um. Um until after we've heard the uh additional public comments, so we can take it into account in our discussion. Any other clarifying questions? Uh oh, Commissioner Clements, uh was your hand raised? Is it raised?
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna wait. I actually would enjoy hearing from the public before having more discussion type questions. Thank you.
Agreed. Great. That sounds wonderful. And um I have another clarifying question, which is for the I'm uh happy to see that the um, the question about um the potential for introducing mixed re- use residential development is is now part of the plan because that's really important. Um could staff clarify uh um where the potential uh would be addressed? Um what forum or committee or report would um would investigate the potential for doing that um uh residential?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chair Ruth. If I can answer that question. So um where that um potent, the evaluation of additional housing um in these particular areas has has now called out in the vision plan, when that would happen and where it would happen would be within the context of the housing element update process. And that process um is one that we started about a year ago, a little bit more than a year ago. We're about halfway through. We're right at the point where we are looking at um uh finding a solution to meet our regional housing needs allocation for new housing units. So that would be the appropriate project um where we would further investigate the potential for that. Um should we get um additional direction to do so? So as of uh right now, we are currently um working on um the areas where we would increase uh density. Um and we did share that with the City Council during its study session on the housing element update um recently on September twenty seven. Um so um where it would happen would be in context of the housing element.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, if there are no further comments from the commissioners at, at this point, uh we can open for comments from the public and um public comment. If you'd like to make a public comment um on the east side innovation district plan, now is the time to speak. And you may join the Zoom meeting or call uh the phone number or virtually raise your hand by clicking on the raise hand icon or pressing star nine on your phone. And uh we have a two minute, please, please keep it to uh your comments to two minutes. And Sarah, are there, is there anyone in the waiting room?
Yes, we currently have three callers. First up, Dimitri.
Welcome, Dimitri.
Yes, hi. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
All right, awesome. Uh yeah, so I think there are some uh excellent changes in the uh document that um staff has presented uh to the com- uh commission. Uh we're uh really glad to see those changes. Um there are a few things uh that uh seem to be missing or omitted. I want to just sort of go over them uh very quickly. Um we are uh working on a pilot program to um, you know, cut down on uh commuter traffic through our community. I think it, it might be worth uh considering adding that into uh the vision uh plan, given the, you know, tremendous amount of uh uh commercial development that's going on and uh also uh 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 hopefully uh some, some additional housing. Um uh they're also at the last um council meeting, there was clear guidance uh for any kind of um additional shuttles uh to, to, to utilize the multimodal station. Uh and I don't see any verbiage related to that. I still see uh Old County Road and McHugh uh in, in um, in the documentation, and I think that ought to be updated since there was clear guidance uh to use our wonderful new four million dollar uh multimodal station uh for additional shuttles. And uh industrial road, um I mean, this maybe this is, it gets too detailed for the vision plan. Um but there are um uh some, some plans to convert that to one lane uh in each direction with a center sort of um, you know, left and right turn. Um we feel that that, that's something that really ought to be examined uh given the uh amount of new jobs that are going to be generated. And we, we, we kind of feel it probably makes more sense to keep uh industrial as, as two lanes as, as much as I hate to say it, uh as, as I'd like to encourage more pedestrian and bi- and bike use. Um so that, I think that's something that, that uh that would be good to consider. But uh the main thing that we uh we see is, is, is not quite there is uh this pilot program and uh the request from council to new shuttles uh to the multimodal station. And that's, that's all I've got.
Thank you. Sarah, the next caller.
David Crabbe.
Welcome, David. David, we don't hear you.
Yeah, yeah, the, your mute.
Now we do. Now we got you. Welcome. Two minutes.
Okay. Uh good evening, uh uh members of the uh planning commission and staff. Um I'm gonna reiterate what I've been saying all along is jobs, housing, jobs, housing, jobs, housing. This uh entire east side is gonna totally mess up our jobs, housing balance. Even if you put housing over there, we're not even close to what we need to be. And we're not alone. I just noticed that uh Redwood City is looking at approving a biotech thing out in Redwood Shore is gonna generate seven thousand new jobs, which is sort of similar to what we're doing over here. But we can't look to Redwood City to give us our housing. We're not probably not gonna get it from San Mateo either. So uh the housing element, still looking at the arena, which is too low. Uh arena is only twenty seven hundred units. We're looking probably in their need for four thousand, five thousand units to balance off. So anyway, uh I'm disappointed that we're still not addressing that issue. Second one is just kind of a question. Uh they're talking about, you were talking about the setbacks uh on industrial of twenty six feet uh for the buildings. It sounded like that setback is a minimum and a maximum, or I should say a maximum and a minimum. Uh that you want all the buildings to be just twenty six feet along there to sort of create a, you said an urban wall. I don't know if we want to create a wall. Why not let the uh developers have a minimum of twenty six and then set back further if they want to and add a little variety there? And maybe a developer will come in and want to put a park in front of there, you know, we don't want them to put a parking lot. But uh if they're willing to put some landscaping or something, why not let them set it back forty feet instead of twenty six? So I'm kind of concerned about that. Uh otherwise, um I, I think you made some progress on this. Uh I'm happy to see it going along. I uh more talking about greenery and so on, which I like on the roads. Uh but the jobs, housing balance is still the elephant in the room and you're really not addressing it. I apologize for making that claim, but I think it's true. So sorry. Thank you.
Very much. Sarah, next caller.
Paul Maganetti.
Welcome, Paul. Two minutes, please. Paul, can you unmute? Oh, we don't hear you yet. Paul, we don't hear you yet. I guess if you're on the phone, star six. Well, that doesn't seem to be working. Sarah, Sarah, is there anything you can do or is there, or is there any other caller that we could go to for, for the moment?
There's no other caller.
Oh, here I, I found it.
Oh, there you are.
Sorry about that.
Welcome, Paul.
Um I had some questions regarding the stronger language for remediation. Um uh part B, it says require that new development proposals are reviewed. Um the problem that I've seen in the past is that the water boards is not in, even aware that there's development going on. So my question is, who is going to make sure that the water boards knows that there is something to be looking at? Um there doesn't seem to be a mechanism in here. And the second is um on page twenty four, talking about promoting environmental stewardship. Again, what how would we do that? Would it involve commu- community feedback? Um how would that work? And finally, um I know these are all gonna be mostly life science offices, at least that's the way it's looking. Um I had asked about last time um putting something in the vision that we not permit work with bi- organisms and biosafety levels three and four. Those would be airborne infectious diseases that can cause severe illness of death. Um I'd really like to see that specifically not permitted so that um anyone who is even thinking of that knows that they shouldn't do that in San Carlos. In fact, in my opinion, they shouldn't need be doing that in the big area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sarah, just to check, are there any additional callers in the waiting room?
No further callers.
Um well, in that case, I would entertain uh a motion that we close the public hearing for this item.
I will move that we close the public hearing for this item.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. We have a, a motion in a second. Can we have a roll call first?
Commissioner Garvey.
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponi.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley. Vice Chair Clements.
Yes.
And Chair Ruth.
Yes.
So now it's our opportunity to um for discussion and um opening it up for de- for comments from the planning commissioners. I'm looking for raised hands or verbal verbal comments. Um Ellen, I, I saw your hand first, so you can go and then Kristen.
All right. Uh thank you, Chair Ruth, and thank you to staff. That was an excellent presentation, and I really appreciated all of the changes that were made. Took me a while to get, get through the long packet, but um I really appreciated looking at all the changes. The two that um are, will bubble up first for me that I'll talk about that I liked um was one that has already been mentioned that is under planning strategy five. The, I like that the, that the opportunity is there to talk about um mixed use residential along um Old County and Terminal Way. Since we haven't finished the housing element and we were, it's still in process and will be for months, we don't yet know if we'll be able to meet arena numbers in a way that is acceptable to the state. So it was nice for me to see this opportunity in there for more discussion, should we need it for additional housing. And we may not need it, but at least the placeholder is there for additional discussion, and I really appreciated that, that that was added. And, and my, my second and last one that I'll raise now, and I come, may come back later with others. And I talked about this a little bit at our study session, and that's uh under planning um strategy number nine, the coordinated transportation studies. Um and to me, it just really, one, one important element of that is a strong transportation demand management plan. And we, as a planning commission, have a role And we, as a planning commission, have a role there when projects come before us, and we've thoughtfully reviewed these in the past. And I think going forward, we will continue to very thoughtfully review them. They're such an important element in the overall picture, and I really appreciated the new language that was added there to Strategy Number Nine. All in all, I really liked the discussion or I liked the changes. I like the vision plan. For me, it helped to see that we're really trying to link the downtown core with the east side. There's physical connections. There's going to be retail on the ground floor. It just makes people want to go and see it and be a part of it and to walk around. And I liked the comment that was made, I think it was in the last, the last strategy on parking, just park once. And once you park once, you can walk everywhere. You can walk to work. You can walk to retail. You can walk to get a bike to eat. I thought that was a really good idea with parking. It just really helps invite people from the downtown core to come to the east side and see what's there. So I really liked the way that was done. Good job.
Thank you, Commissioner Garvey. Commissioner Clements, do you have a question, point?
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to, yeah, thank staff and thank the consultants for a clear presentation and for really being responsive to the discussions that you heard, that, you know, what people were asking about. So I thought it was a very good job kind of reflecting what, what changes might want to be added and what, you know, possibilities could also be investigated. So thank you for that and being so responsive. I also wanted to note the changes regarding looking for opportunities around housing and wanted to ask staff also if you could comment. I know we talked about terminal line and we talked about old county specifically. So I think there are two questions. One, should, should we limit it to those streets? And actually, three questions on that. Two, I know since we met last SB 10 passed and SB 10 is a new law that talks about increasing density in places that are close to transit. And so wanted to see if if that bill provides any different context or perhaps different language that we might want to work into the plan that remains more flexible on locations. Although I do appreciate your focus on Old County as a thoroughfare where denser housing could occur. I just wonder if we want to be so specific as to only call out two streets right now, given that laws keep changing every day, it seems. And then three, I guess, one of the other things that I had brought up was, as an example, just along industrial, that the density of housing just on the main street could be another area of opportunity. So wanted to just ask staff those questions about why those streets and should we build in any flexibility, given that the legislative situation keeps changing.
Would staff like to respond to that now?
Sure, we can respond to that. And I was just gonna see how you wanted to start or how would you, where do you want to go with that, with that question?
How about, Mr. Chairman and Lisa, thank you. What I think, Lisa, I'll talk a little bit about SB 10, and then maybe you can handle the other questions with regard to the location of housing and why specifically the housing was discussed in Terminal and Old County as opposed to other areas. But what we know about SB 10 is that it allows for density of up to 10 units per acre within a certain radius of mass transit like our train station. And I think it's either quarter mile or half mile. I don't, it's something like that. And what it does is allows the city to adopt zoning in those areas that would mandate up to 10 units per acre. However, when we look at our community, the density for areas that are already zoned for housing within a quarter mile or so of our train station, it's more than 10 units per acre already. What isn't is the single-family residential neighborhood, the greater east San Carlos and areas across El Camino that are single-family residential. And so when we look at the intent of SB 10, it looks to us like maybe it's a way for cities to look at single-family zoning in a different way, similar to what SB nine has done, which is a different piece of legislation that was recently signed by the governor, which would allow for lot splits and a few additional units on single-family lots. So that's the way we view it. We don't believe that any language should be changed in this document as a result of those two, those two bills. Lisa?
Thanks, Al. Sure. And I'll go ahead and address why we focused on Terminal Way and Old County Road. Essentially, the first area that came up, kind of came up in the context of east side plan and the housing element update. There was a point where some of our workshops are necessarily overlapping, I should say, that they were happening kind of simultaneously. We had some housing element workshops in May, and you know, it was almost like one month was east side, another month was the housing element. So in both contexts, both contexts, both contexts, the public did raise, the community participants at these workshops did raise the idea for what would it, what it could mean if we looked at adding housing in these areas. And number one, I think it first came up because through the Greater East San Carlos Neighborhood Group, because it could accomplish two things in terms of the concerns that they had. One, which was the issue of land use compatibility. You know, why Terminal Way? Because Terminal Way is, look, is an area that is right adjacent to single-family neighborhood. And so there was this idea that what if this area along Terminal Way could be used as a buffer through the introduction, new uses such as residential potentially. So it came up there and then it came up again in the east side as we have members from the G E S C attending both workshops. And I think other members from the community mentioned it as well. So that's really where Terminal Way came about, to kind of accomplish both of those things. Transition in scale and then transition as buffering, you know, uses. And then with respect to Old County Road, we really looked at that area rather than kind of looking at the entire district and maybe allowing for residential somewhere kind of in the middle, where it might very well, in theory, could be surrounded by more R and D, life science office, or maybe some of the older, more established, heavier industrial uses, traditional heavy industrial uses. We felt, looking at Old County Road, because it's along that main arterial, very close to transit and very close to the, to the existing neighborhoods in San Carlos, if we go through the Royal Underpass and go out to kind of like the main, the downtown core and other areas. And it was close to, closer to where, you know, more neighborhood sorting uses were already established. And I think there might be a couple other ideas. So if Giddy or Annie want to jump in here, because I know our consultant team has worked on innovation districts and other areas, and have learned a lot and have actually incorporated housing. So there might be a couple other points that I'm missing, that I've missed. So you can jump in, but those are the two primary reasons why we looked at those areas in particular, rather than really spreading it out into kind of the more interior portion of the district, which there could be a chance where, you know, it could very much, you know, potentially be surrounded by other uses that are not kind of more neighborly in use and function.
Yeah, thank you for that explanation. And I I realized that the housing element conversation is a more robust dialogue and plan for where housing goes. And so partly my comments are are just wondering if maybe being very specific in this document would lock us in to a plan that the housing element in the end may not quite match. So.
Well, I don't, I mean.
Logistics point. So I, and I think for the explanations of why those two roads, and really my question was more about flexible language and why are we confining it to those two streets? Al, were you trying to respond?
I was just gonna add something to that. I mean, you know, one thing to think about is that, you know, this, this plan is intended to be a dynamic plan in that it will be used by you, the commission, the council, the citizens of the, of the city and the city staff for evaluation and development. So if something changes and something needs to change in this document, it can be changed. If something, and it's very possible, in fact, you know, one of the things that the planners, I think we all need to think about is that these are dynamic documents, not static, and they're not intended to be. And we kind of get, the planners kind of get fixed to that idea that, you know, hey, we went through all this, this work and all this community engagement. But if something changes in, in the marketplace culturally, sociologically, economically, changes can be made to this document. So if that's what we find out and we found that we missed something, we can bring it back to the planning commission and the city council at any time. There's no limitation on change.
Thank you for that. And I just wanted to add that I was looking up the legislation, the approximated transit, how they defined it in SB 10, nine, ten? Forgetting and confused, is a half mile, within a half mile of rich transit. So, so thank you for that. And I had a very peripheral question, so please forgive me if this is not the best way to bring it up, but it reminded me on page 68, the second, my second point is with the transit, transportation demand management requirements spelled out, that while most of this plan focuses on commercial uses, if it is now addressing a little bit of housing in the plan, I guess I wanted to ask if restricted affordable properties have the same application, is TDM applied the same to those properties as to others? And I ask because that's something that I know other communities are grappling with and how to hold operating costs down for what is a very, very financially thin project generally with restricted affordable rents. So this is not the main vehicle for my comment potentially, but that I'd ask while it was called out here because it didn't refer to affordable housing.
Staff, would you like to respond to that?
Thank you.
It seems relevant.
Yeah. And if again, I can ask Lisa Costa Sanders to describe my, what might have been required or how this might have been addressed or discussed in the context of eight seventeen walnut. It certainly is a project larger than seven. So maybe we can get some clarity on how, on our own case study example.
And Lisa, I was trying to quickly look up the ordinance because I do not believe we currently have an exemption. But what helps a lot for preparation of the transportation demand management plans is also their proximity to transit. And so I know for eight seventeen walnut, you know, it's at such a great location. It's so close to shops and to transit and to parks and services that they were able to kind of reduce their standard trip generation rates simply by their location. And then they also have a little extra bike parking and some information that they provide to their residents about use of transit. So that kind of information steering as well takes care of it. So it's not every project that needs to provide a shuttle. It's a lot of other measures to make sure that they're encouraging the use of transit on site.
And thanks for that. I guess I would just voice support for considering costs for restricted afford, 100% restricted affordable properties. Because while they usually are near transit, they're not always close to transit. And there's an increasing focus of the state to make sure that properties end up in areas of high opportunity. And that means that they may be higher V M T areas. And it's actually a problem with the state that they're telling us to do different things in different programs, and there's no one consistent message. But the cost of offsetting measures can be quite pricey. And so I think to that point, the TDM measures can be phrased in a way that says, you know, the program can be created and the requirement's still there, but if cost becomes a problem, that there's some escape valve, if you will, that the folks are allowed to switch the measures or to or to make a showing that they can't afford to do everything at every time. So kind of a bigger picture question, and I'm open to conversation of a better venue to bring the more details up on TDM. But that was my comment, and thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Clements. Commissioner Yakaponey. I'm unmuted.
I had unmuted. I was saying, thank you, Chair Ruth. Maybe just a comment or two and then a couple of questions for staff. And really the comment, the thoroughness and the quality of this plan in nine months is a pretty, pretty good. And staff and our consultant team should take a lot of pride in, I think, delivering to the city of San Carlos a very high-quality framework for us to work with for years to come. So thank you. And I think the other reflection was the five elements that have been updated since the last time we had our study session. Again, just represent the degree of listening to the public that city staff and our consultant have done. So thank you. I'll only speak for me, but I'm sure many in the community are very appreciative of really the openness to incorporate in a, in a, in a high-quality way, the input. So thanks for that. Two, two questions, and there's two parts to the first one. The document, there are a number of places where there is a recommendation or a suggestion to change code, modified code. And then there is also, there are also numerous places where there is a recommendation for further study or review. So my question is, how do, how will staff turn those into a roadmap for action? And what might a timeline be to bring these into play? Particularly given all of the projects that are currently under review. So how are you, how have you thought about going to implementation?
Mr. Chairman, I'll try with that. And Lisa, of course, if you have any additional comments, please turn in. But yes, you're right. We, there's, there's basically the next step is implementation. And there are a number of these things that we we know that we're going to need to make some changes. Not as much to the zoning because we know that many of these projects are going to come forward with planned development projects where they ask the city through our existing zoning to have more height and things like that. So but on the environmental side, on the traffic side, and on the community benefit side, we will need to make some changes, some engineering things. As we saw, if you look at the community benefits component, it talks about moving some of those community benefits that were identified by the community down into baseline requirements. So as noted, some of those are going to need to become either city standards or zoning code changes and things like that. So we have, we do have a lot of we have, we do have a lot of work in front of us. And because this process was so rigorous in such a short period of time, we don't have an implementation plan to put in front of you this evening, but we will. And it will require additional staff resources to do this. We are currently adding staff in the planning division, the community development department to take care of the, of the work that we see for the next three to five years. So we're, we're adding several staff people to accommodate these changes in the advanced planning office. We're going to be hiring a senior planner and a senior administrative analyst and maybe some other people. So that's how we're approaching it. We're, we're going to need more resources to do this in a, in a fairly quick way. And we realize that there's a sense of urgency, once this is approved, to get these things on the books so that we can apply them to these development projects.
That's great, Al. Thank, thank you very much. And I, I think, you know, we have a wise counsel. I'm sure they're going to be paying attention and while a lot of the heavy lifting has been done, and maybe actually the, the challenge for staff is exactly as you outlined, which is putting it into practice over the next short period. So but thanks for letting us know the thoughts on, on added staff so that you can do that. And I, one other question then, and it is related, and that is for all of the projects that are under review, like how soon can city staff start applying, I mean, how soon after approval by city council can city staff start applying the direction from this plan into the considerations on these projects? I mean, hopefully it's immediately, but it'd be good to know that when we start to review more of the details of these projects, we're doing so in light of this vision plan. So I'd love to hear more about maybe the timing of implementation.
My understanding is the timing of implementation is immediate. And because of the way it'll be adopted by the city council, it's the resolution as opposed to like an ordinance. So the, the legal requirements for waiting to implement are shorter. And we, we anticipate that every project that has not been approved by the planning commissioner or city council will be subject to this document. So all those developers know that their projects need to, you know, either if they've been in concept, they've been watching the process very closely and we, we've actually been in discussions with a number of these developers throughout the process and we've touched, we've had touch points where they're watching and listening and some of them are listening this evening. And so they know that their plans will need to take this vision plan into account immediately.
Great. Well, very, very, thanks, thanks for that. I wish you well and getting resources that the city needs to have you effectively execute and incorporate this. And again, thanks to everybody for a very good outcome. And of course, all my colleagues for your thoughtful deliberations to help guide the process too.
I may, through the, through the chair, I was informed by Sarah that there was an individual who raised their hand a little bit too late or right before we closed or right as we were closing the public comment period. If you were in person, you know, this is something that we can easily see visually. So I wanted to let the chair and the commission know, should you want to open it up to hear from this additional person before you continue. So I guess we would need a motion to open the public comment period and then we can hear from that person. Should that be the desire, that be the desire of the commission?
Would anybody like to make a motion?
Reopen. I move that we reopen the public.
I second that motion.
Right. Do we need a roll call for that?
I'll do that very quickly. Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponey? Oh, you're right.
Yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner Bradley? Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
And Chair Ruth?
Yes. Sarah, can you bring the the community member on? Welcome. And you have two minutes for your comment.
Alistair Jeffs?
Welcome. We don't hear you yet. Use some, hello?
Hello, can you hear me?
Now we can hear you. Welcome. Two minutes, please.
Thank you. Thank you so much for reopening this for me. I, I just joined at the last minute and didn't get a chance. I'm, I'm really want to keep it, it's short and sweet. Really, it's about the industrial arts district and its relationship with this innovation area. I think it's really important that that there is a connection between this area of residential and businesses to, you know, this area of, of arts and community. I think it will be a critical piece to, to it all. And I noticed in the, in the document, the vision plan document, that there are parts where it's noted as being a potential connection to the industrial arts district and other parts where there is a connection to the industrial arts district. And I simply would like to advocate for the industrial arts district. I think it's, it's going to be a great contributor to the vitality and the soul that comes with this innovation area. And, you know, I, I definitely think it's something to be considered and, and to be committed to as, as part of the development of this whole area in the east side of San Carlos. That's all my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If, Sarah, there are no additional callers, I suppose?
None at this time.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to close the public comment period.
I move that we close the public comment period.
Second. Great. We have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponey?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
And Chair Ruth?
Yes. Okay, we can resume our discussion and we're, and what our desired outcome here is to decide whether we're comfortable recommending this version of the vision plan to be, to the city council. Or if we recommend the version with any, if we want to suggest additions or changes to it. And so are we at the point where we can endorse the plan for, send it off to the city council? Or are there things that we want to highlight that we recommend adding?
I would like to endorse the plan, but I won't move, move in motion yet and let someone do that after my comment.
Okay, thank you for letting us know where you stand in that. Yeah.
My comments, make it short, are these, simply that I'm very excited about this whole concept, the whole area east of, as we know, over the years, the residents on the east side have to do a little more than most of us that are on the west or in the middle of whatever is going on in city of good living. But I, I think this, I, the idea of this plan, which is thought, thought out very well by our staff and will be by our city council and this commission to the point that due to our motto of the city of good living, believe there's some challenges, the innovations that we, we face with mixing residential, you know, mixed multi-story, mid-rise sort of residential and industrial arts area. It won't be easy to achieve vision and these goals, but we can do it working together, I'm sure. And I congratulate Parkinson Will, one of the country's foremost urban design, architecture and planning firms all over the country. Did a great job on this, working with our staff. Very, very very much.
Okay, thank you. Additional comments? Commissioner Garvey?
I too am. Thank you, Chair. I too am very supportive of the vision plan. I, I really appreciated all the changes that have been made. I don't have any additional changes to suggest for tonight. I am supportive of, of approving the vision plan as it stands. I think it's a, they did a great job of incorporating not only the suggestions of the commission, but of the public. And I really appreciated the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Clements.
Thank you, Chair. I also want to state my support for the vision plan. I think it is, it's really very forward looking. It has a lot of best practices, at least to my understanding of how one plans for an exciting and dynamic area as it grows and tries to take advantage of the leverage, the, the number of businesses coming in to, for instance, create the transit management administration entity. So I would suggest that, I guess I could, I could do this in the form of a motion, but I would like to just request that a phrase gets added with reference to where higher density housing could be appropriate. And, and I went back to my notes from the last meeting and we had talked about in areas in close proximity or within a half a mile of transit. So I would, I would like to integrate into our motion a request that a phrase indicating some level of flexibility as to where housing might occur that references the housing element and or places that are within one half mile of Caltrain be integrated as well. And other than that, I'm very pleased and we'll move approval. Well, we'll vote for approval. Chair, would you like a motion or would you like others to comment?
Let, let's, I'll have another comment and then we'll make sure there are no other comments before we get to the motion. But it sounds like we're, we're headed in that direction. Yeah. So I'll, I'll make my comment that echoing the comments from actually all the other commissioners about the quality of the report and that it reflects the commission, the city council and community input so well. So congratulations to the staff and to the consultants on that. The, my comment is that, that we're all a bit nervous about the amount of traffic that could be created by the, by these new jobs. And, and of course, that's addressing that is woven throughout the vision plan. But the, in particular, the TDM is important because it allows for sort of a monitoring and remediation if there's a problem with traffic. There's some leverage then, so the fact that there's specified monitoring of the actual traffic and, and provides a tool to do something about it if there's a problem. It is, I think, very important and that's, and that's in there. But I think that's very important and endorsing that, that it be, that it's in there strongly. Otherwise, I, I, I support the, the plan and I'm comfortable making the language that Commissioner Clements mentioned about keeping all options open for housing as to be addressed in the housing element plan. There's no need to keep it restricted in the, in this vision plan. Although having some driving towards some specificity has value, having some words that, that allow it to allow, kind of keep, keep all options open, to me seems appropriate as well. So so I see Commissioner Garvey, you, you have another.
And I just, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to echo that I would also support the friendly change that Vice Chair Clements has offered. I think it's a good idea.
And I would as well.
Okay. So any last comments before we, before I ask for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a clarifying question?
Please.
So is it the intent of the commission to remove Terminal Way in Old County and replace it with housing should be considered within a half mile of a major transit center?
Al, I, I have I've written a proposed state, a proposed phrase and to add, not to subtract.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And I'm, I'm happy to hear that it's a add and not subtract because having some specificity, just to show what the thinking, the current thinking is, but also leaving the door open.
That's right.
Seems great. Well, I, I would be pleased to entertain a motion. Is staff, did you have a, a motion that we can look at? Drafted? Perfect. I would entertain some of commissioner to make this motion, if, if any would so like to do so.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to make a motion that I move that the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending that the city council approve the east side innovation district vision plan with recommended change integrated on page forty-two in principle, A little four that adds to the end of that sentence. Sorry, we can wordsmith the motion, but something to the effect. Well, let me read the whole thing. Study the potential for introducing mixed use residential development along Old County Road and higher density housing that is contextual to the neighborhood along other primary streets with a focus on areas within a half mile of Caltrain, of the Caltrain station.
Second emotion.
Did you want to add Terminal Way to that sentence? Was that, I didn't hear that.
Yeah, yeah.
No, it was actually, Terminal Way is actually in a different subsection and I think the other one is more of a generic statement. If staff agrees.
I would just offer that the industrial core area, Terminal Way is referenced as a much smaller area, whereas the catalyst area is a much larger area. However, the, the principle for, for looking at housing on Terminal Way does include just Terminal Way, not the other streets. So, okay, I'm hearing a knock. So sure. I mean, I, I understand the intent of this, this proposed change.
Okay, well, we have a motion and a second.
Would anyone like me to repeat the motion? It was really long. I'm happy to do that before folks vote, but
It sounded clear to me.
And that is up there as amended, saying, adding the phrase and other higher density housing that is contextual to the neighborhood along primary streets with a focus on areas within one half mile of the Caltrain station.
That sounds good.
I, I think that was what you said earlier as well. So I think our original motion and second probably still apply.
And if I may, can I, I, I don't think I quite heard who seconded the motion?
I think that was Commissioner Bradley, but Commissioner Bradley, can you confirm your second?
Yes, I, I second the motion and the amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponey?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
I do.
Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
And Chair Ruth?
Yes. Congratulations. It's nice to see this move right along. Exciting that it's going to go to city council just in a few weeks. So the next item on our agenda is reports, correspondence and general information, beginning with a report on recent city council actions.
I can't recall anything, but since Al is here tonight, Al, is there anything, any reports from city council?
Well, I wanted to highlight that the city council, in their consideration of the East Side Innovation District Plan, that you just voted to move ahead. When the council did their study session a few weeks ago, they asked staff to bring forward the housing element update and do a study session on that before such time as they could consider the plan itself. And so we did that at the last city council meeting. We provided the city council and community with a very in-depth and robust discussion of the work to date for the, the housing element update. And it was a, I thought it was a very good, wide-ranging and comprehensive discussions, a lot of questions from the city council, a lot of community input. And at the end of the meeting, they waved this forward and, and so I think they're in anticipation of your decision this evening and will be moving forward as Lisa said. But I just wanted to mention that the city council just had a very in-depth discussion about housing and where we are. And we're about halfway through that process.
Thank you, Al. And if I may, I just wanted to invite the commissioners that if they're interested in watching the replay, which I know a number of you probably will be, because this is a project that's also coming before you and housing is such a priority in our community. If you're interested in watching the replay and anyone in the public that may be interested as well, you just will go to the City of San Carlos's primary page at wwwcityofsancarlos.org. And on the very top of the screen, there's a small link that says agendas. And if you click on the agendas, you'll find a list of all of the meetings that the city council has, planning commission, transportation, parks and rec, all of the committees and commissions, including the council. And you'll just want to select the city council hearing date of September twenty-seven and you will be able to watch the replay from that link. And that's all I have to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is planning commission comments or reports.
Yes, Chair, I'd like to just make a comment and daylight the fact that perhaps this is correspondence, but that I received an email and responded to an email from Dimitri Vandelos regarding the East Side Vision Plan and affordability of housing and things.
Thank you. Any other planning commission comments or reports? Commissioner Garvey?
Thank you, Chair Ruth. I was out of town the day of the city council meeting, but I did, as Lisa suggested, I went back and looked at the tape. This discussion on housing is outstanding and it's just a robust discussion and it's well worth your time. If you can carve out some time to watch it, it's really worthwhile. I highly recommend it.
Thank you. Other comments? Okay, let's move on to correspondence.
Thank you. Through the chair, I just wanted to note to the commission and anyone in the public who has access or who would like to look at the packet further. And there were a couple of items that the commission had previously asked staff to return with. And our, our, our aim was to bring staff forward and have a a conversation and make a presentation. But with all of the projects happening, those two items continued moved. So what I thought I would do at minimum was ask our economic development manager, Adam Aronson, to provide memos on the two items that the planning commission had requested more information on. And those two items are the Cherry Street Affordable Housing Project. And the second one was the Downtown Wayfinding Project. So those are included in tonight's packet. And I know it's a large package, so if you can't, if it's not coming up, just feel free to email me and I'll send you those two documents separately where you can easily open them up. But they were included in the packet. And should the commission still desire to have a conversation where staff can come and make a presentation and, you know, provide an opportunity for a little bit of Q and A and dialogue, we arrange it, but I didn't want to postpone those. So that's the reason why I use them in the packet as memos, but should the commission desire those come back for a full presentation, we can definitely make arrangements to do so.
Thank you.
Through the chair, I, I don't need a presentation, but I did have a comment on these, on the wayfinding sign. Is it okay for me to make that comment now or do we need to have it agendized?
I think it's okay to make a comment. And if it gets to be a little bit out of the, the boundary, to know.
Okay. I liked all the signs. I did not see any signs for where the public electric vehicle charging stations might be. So I just wanted to suggest that maybe not all of the signs were included in the document you gave us. But I think it would be helpful for residents and the public to know where, where are those charging stations and what might that sign look like? Thank you.
That's helpful feedback. Thank you, Commissioner Garvey.
Okay, did we cover all the projects?
If the chair is ready to move on to I D, planning self comments and reports and updates of current projects, I can, I can provide.
Oh, please. I thought we were on that. Actually, I thought we were on that one. But let's proceed with that, please.
Okay, sure, sure. So just to give the planning commission advance notice of what will be coming forth on regular, regular meeting, which will be October eighteenth. There's three items that'll be before the commission. One is the Mills Act, application for Four, Four Seven Hill Crest. And just as kind of a, a quick overview, a Mills Act provides property owners in the city to enter into a contract whereby property taxes could potentially be reduced in return for preserving a historic resource. So we have one project that came forth quite some years ago, and it looks like this might be our second. But it is, it is a provision that is allowed under state law. And so when folks are willing and wanting to enter into something, it can be proposed. And so this would be something that would go before the planning commission, but ultimately approved by the city council. So that is on the agenda. Another item is a small, a small amendment to the zoning ordinance to address single-family house sign review notification procedures. Our current procedures require that we notice all property owners within one hundred and fifty feet of a project application. And this amendment would change it from one hundred and fifty to three hundred feet. So that's all it is. And I kind of just said the whole thing, but that's what's coming before you on the eighteenth. And then the last item is a use permit request for the relocation of the Honda facility on Industrial to Four Nine Five Brigato in the northern portion of the east side of the city. So that is what's on the agenda for the eighteenth. And that concludes my contributions. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, with that, I think we can adjourn our meeting.
Good night. Good meeting, everybody. Good night.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Evening, everybody.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, everyone. Congratulations on the plan.
Good job, Lisa.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great job, Lisa.
For sure.
Partners. Thank you. In two weeks. Thank you.